All right, good afternoon. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. It is February the 14th of 2023. It is 1:30, and we are beginning city council for the day. And at this time, we will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following. Pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, we anticipate beginning our regular agenda at 2:00 PM, and we will be in recess until that time. Good afternoon. It is 2:00 on February 14th. Again, Happy Valentine's Day. We are back from executive session. This time, we will be calling to order and moving into our regularly scheduled city council meeting. First, we will begin with our ceremonial items. We have beginning on item 2.1. Just looking at Matt back there, I don't think we had any citizen comments. Do we have any yet? We'll catch those here briefly. But before we begin, we'll move to ceremonial items, and at this time, we have Pastor Elias Garcia with Mayor Natha Church of the Living God. If you would please all rise for the prayer and remain standing for our national anthems by our mayor.
You want to sing the anthem?
Oh, you want to sing?
No, she's going to do our singer pledge. Let's start over, Pastor. I think she is going to sing first.
Okay. Good day to all council members. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, who brings all good to mankind, we pray your presence in our meeting. First, we ask if there be any issue in the personal life of any community member, that you may take control of it, and in doing so, we may give our undivided attention to today's program. Our prayer is that you give us vision for our city, so when every decision that is made, every step we take, lead to prosperity for every citizen. Do grant us the spirit of humbleness, that we may attend to the need at hand and never overlook anyone. Unite us in one mind, so that the synergy of our purpose may be strong. We ask it all in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Would you please join us as we recite the pledges to the America and Texas plan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to each Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Well, I tried. All right, next, we will move to agenda item three, where we have citizen comments. This time, we have two already signed up. First, again, I don't think I have to remind these gentlemen, but if you step forward, if you'll please state your name and your address and which agenda item you're commenting on, and we'll begin with Mayor Allen Henry.
My name is Allen Henry at 3302 43rd Street. I am here to talk just a moment about your resolution 6.8 regarding city councilman TJ Patterson. I actually represent a very small and select group. That's the city council of 1984. There are only three of us left out of seven, so it doesn't take long to get a quorum. But we would like for you to know what it was like to actually work with TJ Patterson. You know, we hear stories and we know good things about people, but TJ Patterson was the real deal. He was very, very interested in his district. He did everything he could for his district. He also was very, very interested in the city of Lubbock and did whatever he could to help to unify our community. I can't think of anyone who would be better than TJ Patterson for you to honor as far as someone who represents the entire community. We lost TJ here not very long ago, and we certainly miss him, but we still have Maggie Trejo, and we have several of the others that are not around, but we appreciate that. I talked to Maggie this morning, and she said she would not be able to be here, but she asked if we would please, if I'd please let you know how much she would appreciate this honor for our good friend TJ, and we appreciate the opportunity to give this information to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, at this time, we have Chancellor Kent Hance.
Mayor, members of the council, first of all, this is the first time I've been in here. What a beautiful place, and it's great. First, second of all, TJ Patterson was my friend, and I'm not, I didn't sign up on TJ, but I don't have to sign up on TJ. He is a good guy. He wanted what was best for his district, but he also wanted what was best for the entire city. And he was a good man, and I'm glad that his legacy continues. And I'm here to speak on 6.5, and that's business development, and that's a resolution that would support our proposed 9% housing tax credit project that we have called Santa Fei Place. The apartments are in the, originally, it was put Justice Place because it was on Justice Street. Until I signed the contract, I didn't realize we had a Justice Street, and that one was one of the few that ever got by me about naming a street. And that it's a family complex, a little over 100 units, and the same architect that did Guadalupe Villas is doing this. And it's, we, I'm local, I vote here, have a house here, and I know I've got two competitors, and they would like resolution. I would ask that I be given, that we be given the resolution, because our competitors are not local, and they, I don't know if they've ever done a project here or not. Not only did we do one, the Guadalupe Villas that we own, our family, but we also did three for the city that turned out real well, and that, so that's my request, and I won't throw a fit if you don't vote with me. I might cry for a while, but I appreciate the job you do. And look, I've been on the other side, and it's not easy serving the public in this day and time. I'm glad I'm not in office. There's a lot of hostility out there, and that you have to make some decisions where you know more than maybe the people that are reading about it. But I'm requesting that, that I would like to be the sole approval for the tax credits. If something happens, I'm here. You'll see me. You'll see me at all times, and so you can tell me if there's a problem. But by the way, on Guadalupe, we're almost completely full. We run 95% to 98%, and there are six people that protested that now live with us. And so we think that we've won people over that are now on our side. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chancellor Hance. Appreciate both of you coming forward. All right, next, we will move to agenda item four. This will be our minutes from the November 28th, 2022 special city council meeting for LITA, the December 19th EUB special city council meeting, and then our January 10th and the 24th regular city council meetings. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Ms. Joy, for the second. All in favor of approval of agenda item 4.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. Motion carries 7-0. We are next moving to our consent agenda, and it's my understanding that we have two items out of the 38 that have requested to be pulled. First of all, council would ask for 5.34. There's a little bit of housekeeping to be taken care of on that one. I would ask approval to remove that and move that to, what date were we looking at?
The 28th, Mayor.
We'll move that to two weeks down the road, to 2/28, so we'll remove that one from the consent agenda. And then we will move to agenda item 5.5 and 5.10 for a brief discussion, and I'll turn it over to you on 5.5, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We'll go through item 5.5 briefly. This item is the process by which Lubbock County is going to complete or do the final change order to finish their part of the South Indiana widening project. So council may recall about two years ago, the city funded the piece from 130th to 146th. We did that through gateway funds. The county joined our project, and they paid for 146th down to Woodrow Road. So it's all inside our capital project. Item before you today is no city money. It is no gateway money. It is bringing in the final $35,459 from the county, so that that side of the contract can be closed. It has no impact to the city of Lubbock's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Any questions of Mr. Atkinson on 5.5? Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions, but I pulled that item because the words gateway fund tends to perk up a lot of ears in certain places in this city, and I did not want citizens to think in one way when in fact it meant something differently. So it's basically the county kind of handling their portion of things is what I'm understanding, and I definitely want citizens to understand that as well. Do we have any idea at this moment, or maybe another time, share with us funds that are actually available in the gateway, or when something might be available to begin utilizing out of the gateway? And if you don't have it today, I understand, maybe at some point, there might be something that we begin to share.
Certainly. Councilmember, I expect we'll go back over the gateway fund model in detail when we do the budget this year. It has not really substantially changed from where we were last summer. We're still a year or two out.
Thank you, Bush.
Any other comments on 5.5? All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Next, move to 5.10.
Thank you. Item 5.10 is staff requesting the council approve the purchase of approximately seven tenths of one acre. It is a small piece of land. It is on page 115 of your packet, if you'd like to see a map of it. This piece of property is immediately adjacent to East 19th Street and immediately on the north side of the May Simmons Park. We are able to acquire this tract for $3,310, and it does go to support the continued efforts to redevelop May Simmons. Most importantly, it will make available a legitimate place for people to park during some of the cross-country events and not have to be on the north side of 19th, which is going on during the bigger meets.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's me again, but I was just excited with the fact that we are able to obtain this property and, again, address something that is a huge issue and the delight that so many people are frequenting May Simmons Park, and that is, in fact, the need of additional parking and places for citizens to find themselves. A lot of things have begun to happen, and so we definitely want people to come and have some place to park so that they can share in the many things that are happening. Additionally, the cross-country meet is one of our larger things that takes place there, but there are so many other events that this parking can also assist in addition to the other places that we're looking to create as well. So I just wanted, again, wanted citizens to know that we're doing what we can to begin rectifying some issues that have been a part of that place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Any other comments or questions on 5.10? All right, seeing none, at this time, I would, excuse me, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda, which is agenda items 5.1 through 5.38 exclusive Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of agenda items 5.1 through 5.38 exclusive 5.34, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. All right, motion carries 7-0. We will next move to our regularly scheduled agenda, and we will begin with 6.1 and 6.2, which are both annexation. We'll turn it over to you, Ms. Sager.
Thank you. Item 6.1 is an annexation agreement for approximately 7.46 acres located north of Loop 88, east of University Avenue. If council approves the annexation agreement today, staff will bring the ordinance to annex the property at the March 7th meeting, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Sager on 6.1? Or if you'll go ahead and move to 6.2?
6.2, also an annexation agreement. This is for 185 acres located north of 50th Street, both east and west of Inlar Avenue. Again, this is an agreement the property owners have agreed to, and if council approves today, we'll bring the ordinance to annex the property on March 7th.
Any questions for Ms. Sager on 6.2? Ms. Joy?
On 6.1, everything else is outside the city limits?
To the...
Other than that tract?
To the north of Loop 88 in this area, yes, that is correct. The shaded area is south, and to the east of that storage facility is inside city limits.
Is what? I'm sorry.
Inside city limits, and I said to the east, to the west of that self-storage facility.
I guess my comments on 6.1 and 6.2 are kind of the same. We've really gotten to the point where we've annexed so much acreage, and we have all these agreements out there, which I understand the purpose of the agreements. One is it keeps us from having to do some things that statutorily we would be required to do, but I'm ready to kind of slow this down. I've not heard anything about the 185 acres. I know Mr. Elliott, I don't know, I assume he's going to develop it. He probably needs our water, but I'm really having a little difficulty approving these larger annexations because of that we've done so much recently and in the past year or two, so I don't know how I feel about it. I just, I'm concerned.
Okay.
And I think I'll echo a bit what Ms. Joy said, is we have talked about caution and continually annexing in. I would like to ask Mr. Atkinson to weigh in here just briefly, because I think you and I discussed a part of this being doughnut, which you kind of used the word doughnut infill and some other phrases that maybe you could address Ms. Joy's concern on that, just briefly on that.
Well, and would certainly agree with the both of you. There's a point at which the annexation begins to get, you know, pretty tough on us. As was mentioned, the annexation agreements that come forward, the parties that we present to you have voluntarily agreed to accept some obligation for future improvements that typically we would pay as the public. So I think that's certainly to our benefit. In the case of the one that's on the screen in front of you, there is a very large tract that is already in the city to the southwest, so kind of the catty corner coming off of that. I guess for future, just really good growth and good planning of the city, as you can bring more of that vacant area that really is surrounded, you can look at the lighter gray shading around it, the better we're going to be able to plan and to get the most use out of the dollars we do spend for infrastructure out there. So that would be on this one. Kristin, can you switch back to 6.1, please, the map? Thank you. So this one is really unusual, the way it's developed. The entire south side of what will be Loop 88 is already in the city limits. You've got a Lubbock-Cooper Elementary School kind of to the southwest. We've got a very large neighborhood to the southeast. We have an existing neighborhood kind of to the northwest as you go across there. Getting these corners in, I think, is important to us, and if you'll notice, the little dogleg that shoots out to the left of that one, that is to get the right-of-way that is necessary to make those turnouts and turnarounds where you come under the loop. In fact, if you go out there today, you'll see the pier is already in the air for one of the overpasses that will be constructed. This is one I would suggest, in a perfect world, we'd have both sides of that corner, but we do appreciate the various owners working together to let us get the part that brings that roadway in to where we need it.
Ms. Joy?
Could you just talk a little bit about annexing across the roadways, that sort of thing, because right now, tell us what the current law is about annexation in terms of our roads?
Well, maybe go back a little bit in history and may have to call on Mr. Weaver to be sure I have the most current version, but council's all familiar with places where we have city limit lines in the middle of a road, an existing road. So you can improve the south half, but we can't do the north half. The county can do the north, they can't do the south. That's not the best way to do business, and the laws have changed as they related. This annexation here, the property that's already in the city to the south, is on the south right-of-way line of what was originally 130th or FM 1585. You can see the little ghost line that dips down there, and that's where the new right-of-way is. This annexation that you're doing in both locations, so to the south and to the west, we come completely across the right-of-way. So for those little segments, we don't have half is yours, half is mine that we have to deal with later.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. All right, any other questions on 6.1 or 6.2 of either Mr. Atkinson or Ms. Sager? Is there a necessity to bring these into separate votes, or do we feel comfortable, Ms. Joy, bringing these into one vote?
We should take them in separate votes.
Okay. All right, I will move under 6.1. I do have a motion to approve agenda item 6.1.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Motion and a second. All in favor of approval of agenda item 6.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. All right, 6.1 carries 7-0. Our next move to 6.2, I would entertain a motion.
Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Sir.
Thank you. Mr. Massengill, all in favor of approval of agenda item 6.2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign?
Nay.
Motion of 6.2 carries 6 to 1. Next, we have 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5. These are resolutions to consider confirming the city of Lubbock is in support of the proposed 9% housing tax credit application submitted to the Texas Department of Housing Community Affairs, 6.3 being the Lubbock Lofts Development, 6.4 being the Frontage Estates Development, and 6.5 being the Santa Fe Place Apartments, formerly known as Justice Place Apartments. We've heard citizen comments on agenda item 6.5. Any, out, there she is. Ms. Brown, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Nice to be with you this afternoon. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. 6.3 through 6.5 are applications for the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Housing Tax Credit Program, or the HTC program. And we come to you with these applications around this time every year. We review these once a year, and these are projects, development projects, that preserve affordable rental housing in the city of Lubbock. Applicants are able to use tax credits to offset a portion of their federal tax liability by providing low-income or affordable housing within our region. There are two types of applications. Only one of those applications comes before the city council, and that is the 9% competitive projects. So we have three of those for you all to consider today, and the state does look at these from a regional standpoint. So we typically compete between Lubbock and Amarillo and the northern part of the region, and I'll show you a map of that here shortly. At this point in the application process, the applicants have done a self-scoring process, so they've gone in and assigned themselves the points that they feel like they qualify for. We, all of the applicants that have applied in this, in our city, have asked for a resolution of support today, so those are the three that you're going to consider, and then the state goes back and does a final scoring. So we really don't contribute. They get points by the action that you might take today that goes into their total application point value. I've listed all of the scoring criteria here. One thing just to note, especially following Chancellor Hance's comments, we have written all of our resolutions so that you are in support of each individual project, so the projects are all receive the same amount of scoring weight if you should move forward in support of all of the applications today. You do have the choice to move forward in support of one or over the other. I do believe that changes the weight that that project would receive, and Kelly's out checking for us, but could also change the language in the resolution, so that's something that we need to confirm should the council decide to move forward that way. This is just a map of the service regions, so you can see that we are located in Region 1, which is the High Plains, and if you look on the far right map, you can get a better idea of the counties that are included there, but all of the projects that have submitted this year are either in Lubbock or Amarillo. Your first project in item 6.3 is Lubbock Lofts. This is located at 2,482nd Street, generally 82nd and University, on this triangle piece that's kind of inset behind Taco Bell, Citibank, and Discount Tire. This would be new construction. They are targeting just general demographic, and we'll have one in a minute that's targeting senior living. They are proposing 61 housing units, and all 61 of those are planned to be low-income. I believe the state requires a minimum of 30%, but usually, we see a much higher percentage of low-income with these projects. Item 6.4 is Frontage Estates at 2,549 South Loop 289. This is the former site of 50 Yard Line Steakhouse, and if this looks familiar to some of you, you've seen this project before. They did also apply for the 9% credits last year and did not receive those credits. This is new construction as well. This is your senior living application for this year, 68 units in this project, all of which are planned to be low-income. And then finally, you have Santa Fe Place Apartments. This is the one that was formerly Justice Place. This is at the southeast corner of 43rd Street and Justice, also new construction targeting general demographic, 120 units planned in this development, with 110 of those being low-income. And I know Chancellor Hance has already spoken. We may have representatives with us today of the other projects, but I'm not totally sure about that, but if you have any other questions, I'll do my best to answer those.
Any questions of Ms. Brown? You might stay close.
I will, yes, sir.
All right, 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5. I believe that resolution would likely cause, if there was a vote to approve one over the other, that would likely cause a resolution change. Would you agree, Mr. Weaver?
If one of the items...
If preference was given to one of the other...
Yes, we're double-checking that right now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to hold off on that before we move on these?
You could, or if you wish to proceed, you make the motion for 6.5. If you'll stand by for a moment?
Sure. Well, I think I'll start. There's a lot of discussion of precedent set that typically the city had just given, yes, across the board approval of all applications. Would that be a correct statement, Mr. Atkinson? Would that be a correct statement, Mr. Atkinson? Would that be a correct statement?
Yes. Yes, sir. I believe there's been one exception in the past.
Okay. Mr. Weaver?
Yes. I do have the language before me now. If the council wished to proceed with just one, there would need to be a slight amendment made to the resolution at the time that it's passed. But I do have that language in front of me now.
All right. So about have any thoughts on any of 6.3, 6.4, or 6.5? Ms. Joy?
I want to speak to 6.5. That is a development in District 6. A lot of people don't know where Justice Place is. And if you look at this location, to me, it fits beautifully. It is surrounded by businesses, commercial, some industrial. We don't have a lot of residential there at all. And it's needed in this area. We've approved a lot of these tax credits cases for downtown, for East Lubbock, even some in south. And this one I like because it's an area that is underserved. And so I also have the experience, along with Ms. Patterson-Harris, of some of the projects that Counselor Chance has promoted. The villas that was just completed, we spent a lot of time visiting with neighbors about that particular location. And it, but it too had some of the same properties of this. You've got railroad next to it. You had some commercial next to it, but it served a community need. And as it's turned out, as he's expressed, it's doing quite well. And I do trust that whatever they do, they will have it managed properly. We had one instance when we had an East Lubbock property that was being managed, and it wasn't being managed well. And so part of the key to this, you know, you get it built, but you've got to have somebody to manage it properly, make sure it's safe, make sure it's taken care of, that you don't have people moving in, that you don't, that aren't supposed to be there. And I trust that, and this is your family group, is it not, Chancellor? His family group is going to be the developer of this. And so my preference, if we can do this, would be not to give everybody equal footing, but to single out this particular one for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Massengill?
Was that a motion? Or have...
I'm going to approve 6.5.
All right, I have a motion.
With the resolution, oops, amended. Okay. Yeah, we're amending the first paragraph after "be it resolved" to read as follows. That the City Council of the City of Lubbock identifies Santa Fe Place Apartments as the proposed development in the 2023 competitive 9% housing tax... Can't read your writing. Credits.
Round.
Too round. That contributes more than any other to the concentrated revitalization and efforts of the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Your handwriting's worth some money.
That's good.
Mr. Massengill?
What Ms. Joy said, I second.
There it is, if you want to...
All right, I have a motion to amend 6.5, and I have a second. Any further discussion on this, or any questions on this amendment to 6.5? Well, I would also, just as a brief discussion, I would concur with Ms. Joy. I think that there is a need for this type of housing in that location. Seems to be we get some of these requests in similar parts of town. And I think it gives those in this income category options to be in other places. I also think that it, and work in other places. And I think it is a testament that the chancellor said, you know, he lives here, he works here, he votes here. And there's something to be said that we focused on a lot up here of people that are local and that contribute to our community. And so I would also be in favor of this amendment. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
And in following, I know Chancellor Hans commented about how six folks that originally opposed are now living in that facility. And they seem to really like it. I've heard really positive feedback. So I think that's a, that's a sign also that they offer good living.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any other discussion on the amendment? All right, if no other discussion, all in favor of approval of the amendment to 6.5 is proposed by Ms. Joy and seconded by Mr. Massengill, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? The amendment carries 7-0. And I would also, I guess at this time, I would request, or ask, if it's possible, Mr. Weaver, if we postpone 6.3 and 6.4 indefinitely, or postpone them to a date uncertain?
An indefinite postponement would probably be most appropriate.
Mayor, do you need a motion of that effect?
I do, Mr. Massengill.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to postpone indefinitely Items 6.3 and 6.4.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Massengill, seconded by Ms. Joy. Any questions or further discussion on Mr. Massengill's motion? All right, all in favor of 6.3 and 6.4 being postponed indefinitely, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? All right, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are you up again?
Yes, sir.
All right, we will next move to 6.6 and 6.7, and I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. And I have a joint presentation for these two items as well. We are asking you to consider the creation or certifying the petitions for two new public improvement districts. We will start with Upland Crossing 2, and then move to Upland Crossing 3 from there. And I will just note, our developer on both of these public improvement districts, or PIDs, is Beaton Bow Homes, and they are here as well if you have specific questions about their intentions in the neighborhoods. Just as a reminder, since I haven't had the opportunity to be with some of you and discuss our public improvement districts, just wanted to give a quick reminder to the public how we utilize, or how the developers in the city utilize these public improvement districts. The easiest way that I have found to explain it to people is it's sort of like a homeowners association that's managed by the city. And so we create public improvement districts in a certain area, a geographic boundary. And the homes and properties within those boundaries pay an assessment that funds the district. And what we use that revenue for is for public improvements that are typically installed by the developer, but then maintained by the public improvement district. And so in the case of our two PIDs today, their main purpose will be to maintain drainage improvements. And so these will be very, what we would call, low-maintenance PIDs. They're really just managing a mowing contract, a future mowing contract, to maintain some drainage areas that will be improved by Beaton Bow. So your first PID, Upland Crossing 2, is just over 34 acres. You can see a map of the location here. It's generally bounded by 34th Street to the north, Upland Avenue to the east, and then railroad tracks to the south and west. And it is directly south of what's now, I guess, going to be referred to as Upland Crossing 1, but our original Upland Crossing Public Improvement District. Beaton Bow anticipates building about 200 single-family homes here. And then again, they will be constructing drainage infrastructure that the PID will eventually maintain. What you are doing today is certifying the petition that has been submitted by Beaton Bow that states that they meet the state requirements to create a public improvement district. They are the sole owner of all of the property inside the district today, which meets the requirements of the state to have 50% ownership or more. Our next step in creating this district will be to hold a public hearing, which we are calling today, or you all are calling today, which will be held on your March 7 council meeting. We will also have a creation resolution for you to consider at that time. And that's what really creates the PID. So all that you are doing today is reviewing the petition that's been provided by the developer, certifying that it meets the requirements, and that you would like to move forward with creation on March 7. And if you have any questions so far, I can answer those. If not, we can move on to the next one.
Any questions on 6.6, Ms. Brown? All right, move to 6.7?
Okay. Item 6.7 is the creation of the Upland Crossing 3 PID. Similar area, it's located east of where we were just looking. This one is a little bit smaller, just under 22 acres, generally bounded by 26th Street to the north, Pine Hills Estates to the east, 34th Street to the south, and Upland Avenue to the west. Beaton Bow plans to construct 100 single-family homes in this district. And then same thing, they will be constructing drainage infrastructure that the PID will eventually maintain. We are, our calendar will run together with both of these PIDs. So we will have a public hearing and creation resolution for you on March 7 for this one as well. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Brown on Agenda Item 6.6 or 6.7? And you also have information in your backup. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, hold on just a minute. Ms. Joy?
On 2, I understand they're not, the developers not seeking to assess the PID with the drainage. Is that correct? In other words, they're having to redo drainage, which is fairly common, but they're not asking the PID to pay that back?
That's right. The PID will not be responsible for reimbursing. So the improvements will be developed prior to the PID or the city taking over that area. And then, once we take it over, we will just be responsible for maintenance.
And when you say "we," you're talking about the PID based upon the assessment. And on Upland 2, how much is the assessment?
The proposed assessment, I believe, is 7 cents per $100 valuation. But we're actually going to have to increase that in the actual creation resolution.
Okay.
I think, and Cheryl's not here today, I think she has it at 10 cents per hundred. Yes.
And then on Upland 2, is that the same?
Upland 3 came in with a higher assessment, is it 12?
18.
18, and that is what we're planning to move forward with, with creation.
And this is an area that needs housing, and I hope you can help clean up some of what's out there. There's some older, really older homes that have been abandoned, not cared for. And it really, you know, needs to be done. The way the PID works is they, the assessment is paid, but it's paid through the Lubbock Central Appraisal District. And so they get their bill and their tax bill. That's how it is paid. We have some very successful PIDs in the city. You know, one of those being North Point, where they have done a lot of, on their own, with their assessments, have done a lot of improvements. I've always thought that Beaton Bow did a good job of getting your neighborhoods ready in terms of parks, and some of you, you have places to walk your dogs and all kinds of things. As long as we don't upload that on, too much, onto the residents who'll be buying those houses. They are notified when they purchase homes, and they're given a document, whether they read it or not, sometimes it's questionable.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's not a secret that it's in a PID and that they will be assessed in addition to their property taxes.
And we are required by state law to hold a property owner meeting on an annual basis. Those are typically held in June or July, and they are notified of that as well. So they do have a couple of opportunities throughout the year to speak to their board and developer and give feedback on how the neighborhood's being maintained.
Thank you.
Mr. McBrayer?
Are these funds, when they're collected, are they placed into a separate fund?
So, excuse me, they are collected by the Central Appraisal District. And then the City of Lubbock has a contract with LCAD that they pull all of those funds and then transfer them over to us. And then each public improvement district has their own fund within the city.
Any other questions? All right. So no other questions on 6.6 and 6.7. I would entertain a motion to approve both Agenda Items 6.6 and 6.7. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer, thank you, Ms. Joy. Motion to approve 6.6 and 6.7. And a second, all in favor of approval of those Agenda Items, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? Motion carries 7-0. We will now move to our last Agenda Item. This is one Mayor Henry spoke on earlier. It's a resolution, consider approval of a resolution naming the Citizens Tower East Plaza in honor of former Lubbock City Councilman TJ Patterson. Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an Agenda Item that I put on. I appreciate Ms. Joy's co-sponsorship of it. It's something I've worked on for a few months now. As many of you know, our plaza that sits between this building, our parking garage, and soon to be our police headquarters is quickly coming to completion. It's something this council voted on with the intent of making that a gathering place for our community. It will have a place for flags, flag ceremonies. It'll be a center point of our downtown as it revitalizes. And it'll be a center point of our campus here for city services. I think it's fitting to name it after one of our great leaders that we have just lost, TJ Patterson. He was the first black council member elected to this council. I believe he's served this council longer than any other elected official. We could tell TJ's stories for hours in here tonight. And I think there'll be a time and a place to do that. But I think it's very fitting to name the plaza, Patterson Plaza, to honor TJ's legacy and to give us a mechanism to teach those, our children, that anything's possible in Lubbock, Texas. And if we were to serve as elected officials with half the passion that TJ served this community, which, by the way, he always affectionately referred to it as Lubbock, Texas, USA, and I can't say it with as deep as a bellowing voice as he did, then I think we would be successful. So I would make the motion to approve Item 6.8, and I would ask my colleagues to join me in approving and naming the plaza TJ Patterson Memorial Plaza. And I believe we've got, do we have a... We've got a second. Do we want to show an image? It's up to the mayor, really.
Oh, do we have a motion and a second? Did you have something you wanted to show?
Oh, we don't have it ready. Don't worry about it.
Well, we've got it. Let's go ahead with the motion, the second, and then we can follow that. I've got a motion from Mr. Massengill and a second from Ms. Joy to approve Agenda Item 6.8. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.8, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? Our motion carries 7-0. And with that, I believe, before we adjourn, let's go ahead and show that, Mr. Atkinson.
Addict? See if it'll reboot. Yeah, Mayor, there we go. It woke up.
All right, I'll acknowledge Ms. Joy at this time before we adjourn.
TJ Patterson didn't just influence the lives of us who live in Lubbock. And I think Mr. Henry said it was 1984, is that correct? The year that you and Maggie and Joan Baker were members of that council. and Joan Baker were members of that council? But he was also recognized statewide. He was president of the Texas Municipal League. I still see people at those league meetings that remember TJ Patterson, and they ask about him, and when he passed away, a resolution was presented by Texas Municipal League in his honor. He was colorblind, and that doesn't mean he couldn't tell what color his shirt was. What it means is he didn't care what color you were. He treated us all the same. And I got to know him, and he called me Joy, which was fine. But he didn't treat me any differently because I was white, and he didn't treat anybody differently because of the color of their skin. But we could do no better than to name this plaza after TJ Patterson.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, now that the slide is shown, Mr. Atkinson, thank you for getting that up. I appreciate all of you. I hope you have a wonderful Valentine's Day, a good and appropriate ending to our meeting today. And with that, it is 2:52, and we are adjourned.